Roll call, please, Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Here.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes. Mayor Derwin.
Here. Oral Communications, this is the part of the evening when you may speak to anything that is not on the agenda, knowing that we cannot speak at length about it or take action. You may speak once for up to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak under oral communications? And Sharon, you can do, you can do the job tonight and look.
Okay, we have one, Rita Combs.
Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. I just love Portalo Valley and it's just so beautiful. And next Thursday, the 22nd, is Earth Day. And I've attended different committee meetings and I don't, you know, there were suggestions, people talking about things, but I'd like to know if anything is planned at all, especially for the kids that have had such a hard time this year in connecting with, you know, with nature, with everything. It would be great if something can be pulled together for at least the kids in the community to remind us about just, you know, not just looking out the windows, but this beautiful town in the honor of Earth Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other oral communications?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, thanks. Jeremy, did you want to make an announcement before I do consent agenda?
Yeah, I would recommend that Town Council pull item five off of the consent agenda for consideration and move it to another meeting. It was based on some feedback I've received in the last 48 hours from some of the larger landowners in town who wish to have a further engagement on one of the, one of the wildfire committees recommendations. And this will be primarily through the Woodside Fire Protection District. So we'll bring this back when that outreach has occurred.
Okay, so with that, can we just table it until another meeting?
Yes.
All right. So consent agenda, any person from the public may speak to an item on the consent agenda. However, the members of the public are only able to comment. They can't vote on whether or not the council will take action and pull an item. As with the oral communications, each person may speak up to three minutes on each item. Would anyone like to pull or, excuse me, comment on something on the consent agenda?
Bob Turcot.
Bob Turcot.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to comment on item number five. Would you prefer that I hold my comment? And if so, what public meeting will item number five next appear in?
Jeremy, do you have any idea when it will next appear?
I, no, I don't have a meeting scheduled. So the three items that were part of the letter are items that will be drafted by the Woodside Fire Protection District as part of an upcoming fire code amendment. They have not started that process formally at their end, but the committee, wildfire preparedness committee, this is, this is three of their six recommendations, made the decision that it made more sense for those, those proposals to be part of that code instead of the town's code. So there will be a process at the Woodside Fire Protection District's board as they consider fire code amendments. And then it would come back to the town for ratification at a future date. I can, I can let you know when that happens.
If you don't mind, I've actually consulted with many of my neighbors. There are, there are 10, in addition to myself, there are 10 neighbors that I'm speaking for with their consent. If you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and make my statement. Instead of 10 times three equals 30 minutes, it's actually about a little over three minutes. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. So as I said, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and 10 other residents of my neighborhood who have read the statement I'm about to give, affirm that represents their views and consented to me speaking for them. This is regarding item number five in the consent agenda, and in particular, the proposed extension of defensible space to 200 feet on slopes greater than 30 degrees. First of all, thank you to the Town Council and staff for prioritizing wildfire preparedness and to the committee members for their time and commitment. There's no issue facing the town that is more important or more urgent. Ordinances should be universally applicable. They shouldn't put some residents in the position of having to violate them if the risks of complying outweigh the benefits. Wildfire is not the only hazard we face. I know of three properties in my immediate vicinity that suffered landslides requiring expensive engineering remediation. Where native vegetation was completely removed, landslide resulted in the home being red tagged. Don Bullard and his colleagues at Woodside Fire Protection District are heroes of mine. Every recommendation Don makes should be taken seriously, but it's not Don's job to study ground movement potential maps and weigh incremental benefits against other costs and potential risks. That's the job of the town and its committees. I've carefully reviewed meeting minutes and spoken with members of various committees. I found no evidence that a degree of incremental benefit of this proposal was considered, nor were competing costs and risks. The recommended extension also calls for removing trees to allow 12 feet of clearance between canopy tops, 30 to 60 feet from the structure, and six feet of clearance, 60 to 100 feet, with an increase in the recommended separation for steeper slopes. On our north-facing slope, that would mean removing five to 10 mature oaks for every tree left standing, well more than 50 trees taken down in total on our property. And the sad, the sad irony here is that burn scars indicate that these trees survived our most recent wildfire, which was more than half a century ago. With each oak carcass weighing around 20,000 pounds and the nearest asphalt 150 feet away, this would require extensive use of heavy mechanized equipment on a slope that the town map describes as, quote, unstable with deep landslide potential. I'd be happy to do it if it would significantly reduce the risk of structural loss in our neighborhood, but the data supporting it are weak and, to my knowledge, haven't been examined by the wildfire preparedness committee. Don's recommendation comes directly from the National Fire Protection Association. As best I can tell, the NFPA recommendation is based on studies upon Rosa Pine Forest in Southern California. Our recommendations at a national level, based on studies of Conifer Forest in Southern California, relevant for a north-facing slope in the Bay Area that is populated with coastal live oaks, or is a more nuanced approach warranted? We need a consideration of cost, risks, and potential benefits. Slope instability is not the only cost of this proposal. Habitat destruction and habitat fragmentation is also, and should be soberly considered. If we're going to destroy this priceless heritage, we should have some confidence that the intervention will yield a more, more than an actionable return. We're not asking the council to reject the proposal outright. Rather, we're asking that be sent back to committee for a careful, careful risk benefit analysis with input from the Geological Safety Committee, the Conservation Committee, and other relevant experts such as arborists with specialization in wildfire and soils engineers. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks, Bob. This would affect my property, so you got my attention. Are there other people who would like to speak to oral communicate, excuse me, consent agenda?
There are no other hands raised.
Alrighty, thanks. So with that, would any of the council members wish to pull something from the consent agenda?
I wanted to pull number six.
Number six. Alrighty. Anything else?
Number five.
Five. Well, five's gone.
Right?
He's just, he's just, remove it. So that's what I'm doing.
Oh. Anybody else? All right. Is there a motion to approve? One, two, three, four?
Seven and eight. Removed.
Okay. All right, roll call, Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Okay, number five, we are cabling for now, doing something else with it. Number six. Sarah.
Um, my comment was more, well, it's kind of a question. Jeremy, for you on this one, I know there was a lot of thought put into this survey. And my understanding is the perp, the objective of doing the survey to begin with was really to kind of get a scope or measure the amount of kind of incoming on compliance issues to the town staff so that potentially staff could make changes to how these, these things are addressed. I'm assuming from an operational standpoint. And so I noticed that the comment was just for the council to review it and that the staff didn't have a recommendation based on the results of it. So I'm just kind of curious, is it that you guys don't have recommendations yet? Was it helpful in helping you kind of understand where you guys can make changes to make things work more efficiently or merit where you might need to make changes or what have you? I just was wondering what changes you might be making as a result of the survey. Sorry, that was a long-winded way of asking really that, that final question.
Not at all. Yeah, it's the, it's that the staff does not have a recommendation at this time. You know, part of the reason that we don't is that we've certainly seen a drastic increase in the number of co-compliance calls that we think are related to people being home in COVID. We don't know what that means just yet. The, there's a variety of issues in here that I think require just further analysis from staff on what potential solutions could be based on, you know, the limited results that we've received from the, from the survey. So we're just not prepared to provide any, any recommendations. I'm also, as you, as the council knows, we've been contracting with a part-time, eight-hours-a-week consultant through our, or regular contracts with the, on the building side for code compliance to get through some of the backlog. As the council knows, we've got something like 93 or 94 open cases, excuse me, 93 calls this year, where we typically get 45 to 50 calls in a year. So we're working through that. We want to see if there's something that comes out of those conversations as well. So we do plan to come back and it will not likely be part of this budget process just yet, but we want to take a look at the information a little bit further and then come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through the chair, if I could also weigh in on this a bit. One of the other issues that the legal department is looking at is whether the town has the full modern sort of toolbox of tools to use if, if, if the council were to move forward with more code enforcement activity. Sorry for my visitor here. And so we are looking at bringing forward to the council some options for having a, having more alternatives in terms of issuing fines, penalties, and administrative citations rather than just proceeding against somebody in a criminal proceeding, which is your typical remedy for municipal code violations.
Thanks, thanks, Cara. All right, with that, is there a motion to, I guess, table number five for now and accept number six? Make a motion.
Move.
Okay, let's say Sarah first put her hand up. Is there a second, Jeff?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Sharon, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Now we're on to the regular agenda, and item number nine is an update from the farmer's market operator. And we are happy to have our operators here tonight. Neil, I, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Estep. And Lisa, and Lisa Sheridan from Good Roots Farmers Markets. Jeremy, are you going to kick this one off?
Just to turn it over to Nile, Nile's been operating our farmer's market now for close to two years. He's, he and his team have been operating it through some truly unbelievable times during COVID. And I think Nile, during his conversation with you, will remind you of some of the great work that the farmer's market did do in reaction to COVID-19 and what they're thinking about doing. So Nile, turn it over to you. And Nile, Nile is not feeling so well tonight, so I promised him that we'll all be nice to him. So, Nile, all yours.
That's a really good tactic. I'm going to try.
Yeah. No, I got all my wisdom teeth taken out yesterday, so I'm looking a little bit like a chipmunk right now, but it's all right. So thanks for the introduction, Jeremy. Yeah, so I think the last time we all spoke was when we transitioned over to the safe market, which we ran for a couple of months there, getting some of the Portalo Valley community members access to their beloved vendors. I think overall that was a very successful program and really was happy that the vendors could still sell their products as well as the community to be able to still buy it. We actually started a new program, which we've been continuing through COVID, which is donation boxes of organic vegetables. We partnered with a corporation in the area and have been giving, donating Portalo Valley School District approximately 30 to 50 new boxes a week, specifically for Portalo Valley School District, but then that gets out to East Paltz and other communities in need. But pulling back to the farmer's market, yeah, it's been, it's been a weird time, but I think we've adapted well. We've tried to hold our safety precautions up with making sure everyone has a mask and is keeping, keeping their distance. But as we start to see events come back to normal, we're really excited. One of the things that I always love about the Portalo Valley markets is the diverse community that we have. We have our, our small families, our senior citizens, as well as the biking community. So yeah, here, let me go to the next slide. So one of the focuses that we want to look at in this coming year is our community connection and utilizing potentially the park and getting back to kind of some more celebrations at the market, something that Jeremy and myself and Brandy and Carrie were talking about prior to COVID. And so partnering with local restaurants and stores to be at the market just so that there's more, more community members that are aware and utilizing potentially the park and doing different kind of art things with some of the students who are getting off the buses. So we've been talking to the Portalo Valley School District as well as the Priory School. So we just had meetings with both their superintendents, which actually one of the students reached out to us and wants to be a vendor there. So, so we may be having a, a, one of the youth members running a farmer's market booth, which I think will be really exciting and potentially give hopes for other youth in the community to utilize the farmer's market as a selling place. So yeah, and so one other thing that we will be expanding is offering EBT to some of the community members who may be having access to EBT and are senior citizens. So we'll have a EBT machine there at our booth. We'll be working with the students, as I mentioned, and we'd like to have more featured artists and potentially do some reusable bags and those kinds of things to be environmentally more conscious. That's kind of a, kind of the wrap-up.
Okay, thanks, Nile. Could you remind us all what EBT is?
Electronic benefit, so it's, it's our government's food stamp system.
Mayor Derwin, if I may, Nile, I know one of the things that you've dealt with over the last year is, you know, some change in, in vendors and, you know, some have come, some, some have left. Do you want to talk a little bit about that change? What drives that change? And, and, you know, the new vendors that you've been identifying and bringing on board and, and the like?
Definitely, there's been a, a larger draw for having some more hot foods. We definitely want to make sure that our farmers are present and we always have access to that. But it is really hard during these times that vendors are looking for as high-yielding markets as possible. So we're always shifting, but the vendors, Gallardo, has always been loyal as well as Escaval. But we are looking to gain a couple more organic farmers. And yeah, and we have a couple food trucks have joined as well as a cheese vendor, pasta vendor. And we're going to be over around 25 during the summer season, so we're really excited about that.
Great. Does anyone have a question for Nile? Yes, Jeff.
It's, you know, it's actually more of a comment, Nile. I'm not sure I ever actually thanked you publicly or directly for all of the work you did last year in sort of getting us through the, you know, getting us to the, the safe market during the pandemic and the transition back. I was just down at the market last, maybe last week, last Thursday, and it's, it looks, it looks really good again. There's just, you've got a great set of vendors again. And, you know, that, the switching to the safe market last year, I think, made a huge difference for a lot of people. And I really appreciated you guys working with us on that and, and our own staff for, for all the work they did on making that happen. And for, again, for transitioning back. So I just, I just want to thank you and it looks great. And I just, you know, anything we can do to help, I'm happy to, to help.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Yeah, it's been really a group collaboration with us. We talked to Jeremy and Brandy and Carrie many times, as well as our market manager, Lisa, and all the wonderful local vendors we have. So it's really a group collaboration and everybody coming together.
Thank you.
Any other? John?
Yeah, I know, thanks, thanks for all you've done for us on that, on the market. It's, it's looking quite good. I have to say that a month or two ago, Mary Ann and I met down there and walked through the market. And it was, it was a little slow that day, and of course, we were still in the throes of the deep COVID, so to speak. So we, we were talking to some of the vendors and one of them at least recommended, said, you know, why can't, maybe we could have some kind of raffle that would draw more people in. I don't know if that's, if that's a possibility or something you'd consider to do and, or if that, if that even works with farmer's market setups. But it was something that one of the vendors threw out that he thought sounded like a great idea. And that's my question.
Yeah, there, there's definitely a good tactic in having the raffles. It's just kind of hard with, you know, writing people's names down and then putting it in. That's a very physical sensitive thing, so just during that time is a little hard. But that's something that we've done in the market in the past, and we definitely want to reintroduce to get the community excited about potentially winning a raffle basket. But we'll bring that back in, John. Thanks for recommendation.
Thanks, Al.
Sarah?
Are, um, is traffic up significantly since that kind of lower time that John mentioned? Are you can, I guess, are you concerned about the volume of people coming through at this point? Or do things seem like they're back on a better trajectory?
Yeah, no, things definitely seem like they are definitely back on a larger trajectory, about 20% in the last three months, I would say. Lisa's been kind of trying to keep count. We don't take count of every single person, but talking to the vendors, their sales have, have went up about 20 to 30%. So we're, we're excited to report on that. Yeah.
Yeah, I've been checking the market out, and last week was really, really busy. And I, just as I said, John and I were a little concerned because we were getting some feedback from the community. They were worried about the market. I, I'm not really worried about it right now. I think you're doing a good job, Nile.
Thank you very much.
Are there other questions? Sharon, does anyone from the public wish to speak?
Not at this time.
Alrighty, then I guess it comes back to us. And do we need to take any formal action here?
No, no action tonight. We just wanted you to have an opportunity to hear from Nile. And we will be coming back next month to the council with a contract renewal. And, you know, certainly if there's, you know, any, any other ideas that the council members individually want to reach out to Nile on or related to the market, you know, please do so. But we appreciate very much working with Nile and his team over the last year and a half. Particularly in the last year, it's just been absolutely fantastic. And, you know, thank you to him for being so responsive to ideas and, and helping our little market out.
Yeah, thank you, Nile and Lisa, and please keep up the good work. Because if you don't keep it up, we hear about it.
Yeah, I bet. Thanks, guys. All right, we'll keep a good job and we'll, we'll see you soon. Take care now.
Feel better.
Yeah.
Item number 10 is a study session. This is our council priority study session number two, in which we will adopt our priorities. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor Derwin, members of the council. I hope you can see my slideshow. So tonight, we want to go over, you know, first remind you and the, the public of how we got here. Go over the draft priorities that are in your packet and take any questions or comments that you might have. As you know, the process to develop the council priorities started early this year. As we have in one previous year, we start with a workshop with the committees and commissions to hear their ideas on those issues that they'd like to work on in the upcoming year. That information is in your packet and was included to the maximum extent possible in the priorities based on council feedback from the February study session and what we think we can accomplish next year. That process continued on February 24th in the study session. This is the sixth year, I think, the council has done this. So the council reacted to a draft set of priorities and shared their own ideas. And that feedback was then incorporated into the draft that's in front of you tonight in the packet. So the priorities is drafted for fiscal year 2122 have four areas, if you will. The first is wildfire preparedness and emergency preparedness. And that consists of a suite of projects that, some of which are in bold, that we believe can be completed in fiscal year 2122. So you can see those on, goodness, read page 107, sorry, I think, yeah, someone was in the way. So these include some items that have been discussed previously at the council that I think they're well aware of that are required for us to do, including the state mandated safety element. It has a mitigation planning effort, which happens on a five-year cycle. But also some new ideas, including a virtual emergency operations center, which we should be bringing a contract to at the next meeting. So implementation should start this year but finish next year, and other items. Number two is land use projects and programs. Thought it was important to bifurcate this section out to share the considerable amount of major projects that the Planning and Building Department is responsible for over the next year and beyond. Few of these, as you can see, are in bold because the, the natures that they will extend into the, into future fiscal years. But major projects, housing element update, design guideline changes that have been recommended by the wildfire preparedness committee related to wildfire, a general plan update that may kick off very late next year, at least some initial conversations. And then obviously Stanford Wedge Project. This does not include other projects that may come as part of affiliated housing program or others that are beginning to have conversations with the planning department. Number three, we're on read page 108, service delivery enhancements. This is an amalgamation of priorities related to ensuring that residents and visitors alike have an opportunity to get the service that they deserve and that the staff is able to provide that service in a way that people grown accustomed to, as they should, particularly before COVID. So there's a variety of different efforts and projects related on read page 108 towards the bottom there. Couple that I'd like to point out that I think are pretty key here. The website update is, has been in process for some time, but, you know, clearly within, last year was delayed. That is going to be a key part of how the town relates to the public and conveys information. Certainly looking at opportunities to enhance staffing where appropriate. The, the sheer volume of requests on staff to do day-to-day work has drastically increased and the amount of time that we have to spend on some of those tasks are increasing as well. So we included a recommendation here to allow the staff to consider what future staffing needs may look like starting at this next budget. And then also I want to focus on E and F. The, you know, over the last years, the council The, you know, over the last years, the council has supported a variety of efforts to modernize aspects of town operations, including as it relates to the budget of fiscal operations, use of PB connect and the like. And as we continue with major projects, the the, the need for additional and enhanced project management tools for staff is important. So we're going to spend some time thinking about how to implement that. Number four, there's a relationship between number three and four. Number four is to focus on established programming. Much of what we normally do in a, in a year, in an average year was, was completely subsun by the pandemic. So we wanted to ensure that staff and committees had the time and resources to focus on those efforts that make Portola Valley what it is. There should be nothing surprising on this list. These are, as you, as you know, these are many things that get funded. Sometimes they don't even get, they, they don't even get talked about as part of the priority listing because they're day-to-day operations, but due to what I've just described, they've been delayed or otherwise. So again, you can see on red page 109, a variety of projects that we believe tie back to established programming. So that is my presentation. I'd love to take any questions and comments you have. And also tonight with us is Brandy DeGarmo, the assistant of the town manager is available as well. We hope that we did capture what the council directed us to do in, on February 24th meeting. And words, any comments? Thank you.
Okay, who has questions? Sarah, did you raise your hand? Or did you scratch your face?
No, I'm sorry. I was having a family issue. My apologies.
I know how those are. Okay, no other questions? Okay. Wait, John, was that you raising your hand or scratching your face?
I was scratching my face.
I was actually going to say, is that Sharon? Did you raise your hand or scratch your face? So this is getting ridiculous. Sharon, are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
No, they're not. No speakers.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for comments, guidance, thoughts, motions. John?
It's great. I'm, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's better organized this year than it hasn't been ever in the past. And I think it really captures our intent. I'm, I'm really happy with it.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Chef?
Yeah, I concur. I just, I, I think this looks, this is sort of, it's, it's it's more complete that I've seen it. I feel like we sort of, it's, it's, some of it's ambitious. But it kind of, I think it's just, it's, we've, I feel like we've, you know, I think we've spent a few years now kind of trying to, to refine this so that we work smoothly and includes everything we want to do. And it sort of stands up for what we all think is important. And I feel like we've really kind of made a lot of progress now. This is, looks really good. So, so thank you to staff, especially for doing this. And I think this is actually sort of a good result of, something that's becoming a better process for all of us.
Anyone else? Okay, I would, with my colleagues, I think we're, oh, Craig?
Yeah, I was just, because I, I, I agree. And I think one thing that we've managed to do this year between staff and, and our discussion last time is, is add a number of things that are less specific project focused. I mean, there, there is some of that, but a lot of this is kind of structural stuff to kind of rethink how we're doing things at Town Center to, to prepare us while to, to catch up with some of the demands that I think we've seen shifting over time and also prepare us for some of the things that we see coming down the pipe, like the new housing element, which are going to require us to do things in, in, in ways that are different to what we have. And, and we've just gone through a year of that with, or a bit more than a year with all the changes for COVID. And there's, there's more of that to come, I think. So I think we've managed to capture that well in this, in this proposal.
I agree. I think we're finally figuring out how to do this. It's taken a little while, but now it's actually starting to look good. So I assume I need a motion. Is it a motion to adopt the priorities for fiscal year 2122?
Yes.
Still moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Jeff, discussion? Roll call, please, Sharon?
Councilmember Alves?
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke?
Hi.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin?
Hi.
Well done, Jeremy and Brandy and everyone else who worked on this.
Yeah, the entire team worked on this. This is, you know, from, from a staff perspective, it, everyone's involved. I mean, we're small enough to have every single member of the team involved, but are the only reason I think it looks as good as this year's, as council was gave great direction to us and we're really pleased with it. So thank you.
Okay. Right. Item number 11 is a recommendation by the town manager to adopt a resolution to increase the purchase order requirement levels. Jeremy?
You and Car Silver, who helped draft portions of this, can answer any questions you may have as well. So this is actually a long time coming as part of the process to modernize our policies and procedures. This was an area that staff identified as a priority. Today, any item that's over $500 requires the production of a purchase order, which is very low. That usually keeps up with some sort of CPI or has changed over time. I, I don't know the last time this changed in, in the town. I went back quite a bit. Looks like maybe 15 years or so, at least. We have found as the cost of doing business increases, we're producing more and more of these for the most basic needs. And I did a survey of other similar communities. The most germane that you can see listed here on red page 110 and found that, you know, for the most part, for looking at all of them, that we were well under what I think is a reasonable level. So this changes our policies as it relates to when a purchase order is required. Anything over $1,500 would require such a purchase order as listed in the policy and the resolution. I think it's fairly straightforward. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeremy. Does anyone have a question? Craig?
How did you pick the number 1,500? Looking at the table of other towns, most of them seem to be quite a bit higher than that. Is, is 1,500 based on kind of the purchase orders that you're seeing and the things that look reasonable for our town?
Yeah, number one was just in talking to the managers that we, we felt enough very basic items that shouldn't require purchase order were in this range. A secondary concern, to be candid, was I, I didn't want to push it too much higher. I thought that this would be a good place to start to see how things were going. And then we can always come back and revise the policy if we find that we didn't hit the mark. But based on our analysis of, of what we do, you know, we, we, we think we got the, the majority of those types of purchases.
And then the, the second question I had was, you mentioned that other towns or that you've seen other places may have cost of living or other automatic increments in there. The nice round numbers for these other towns make me think that either they don't, or these were the base numbers, which may have been, that they may have been growing from. There's no suggestion in here to have that automatic increment. So is it really more kind of a note to yourself to come back to us to raise the limit again in the future if necessary?
Yeah, it's mostly there to remind me that this is, you know, something that we should consider in the future. We do this, obviously, for everything else that we do. We also we concluded as a, as a team that we weren't sure that managing purchase orders with that kind of CPI increase made a lot of sense. You know, at some point you get some pretty bizarre numbers.
$1,632 and then.
Right. Right. And it was, you know, rounded up to the, you know, rounded down or rounded up to the nearest. And then that felt a little arbitrary one way or another. So just, it's a placeholder to consider it. I, you know, it's, the other way to go is to come back every three years, know it falls behind and then just come back. So we'll, we'll, we'll have a conversation with the council in a couple of years when, when we've got some data to analyze and see how we did.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm embarrassed that I don't know this, but now if the, somebody is buying something under $1,500, how do they, what do they do? Do they just pay for it themselves and get reimbursed? Or do we have a credit card or something they use?
We have a variety of systems that, that we use. Certain staff have credit cards with low limits over a monthly period. So that happens. Sometimes it's an invoice that just goes through the normal process. So we can have, we can send an email up to send something of that nature. Also exploring, there's a thing called purchase cards too, which is sort of a credit card version, something through Open Gov that we're looking at as well to give staff some, you know, limited ability to do the things. This is particularly an issue for the guys. This is a particular issue for Public Works. Where they can produce a ton of these in the 500 to $1,500 range for seed, for fixing the truck, for things that I, you know, really should just be automatic.
So does this mean, so we'll still see, like, when we look at the weekly check registers, we'll still see those smaller purchases. They just won't have had a purchase order in front of them. Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank you. It's, and it provides us the staff a little bit of independence. So, you know, I think that they should have the authority. I mean, if this has been budgeted and it's part of what we normally do, then I, you know, that extra level is, is not necessary at the purchase order level. I can catch it at the warrant list in other places and then deal with the issue at that point. And that's happened in the past. I mean, those, those issues do come up where something was purchased and we should have done that a little differently.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Sharon, are there any questions from the public?
Yes, Rita Combs?
Rita?
Hi, thank you for taking my question. It's, it's kind of a odd question concerning purchase orders. We had talked, you have talked, and I guess the, you know, the residents have asked questions about the, the new software, financial software that the town has purchased to show more transparency. And I don't think that there was been a finance committee meeting in the past couple of months. But has there been a correction on the new implementation of the new software so that, you know, even these purchases can, how they fit in? I, I, you know, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't work for the town. I'm not privy to that, but I haven't heard any closure on the implementation of that new software as it relates to the finance and budgets. Thank you.
Jeremy, can you speak to that one, please?
I, I apologize. I don't know that I understand the question in context with purchase orders.
It's just, um, you know, the town spent, just transparency, you know, this town has always talked about transparency on purchases. And, you know, this is, we haven't talked about budget and finance in a while. And this is, I'm reading through the materials last night. I, I was, it, it just reminded me that there hasn't been any closure on any update on this expensive new financial software. And it's been updated. And the last time there was a budget presentation, I, it, there wasn't, the conclusion was that there was going to be some kind of training or some type of update soon. And perhaps I missed it. And, and there has been, it, it just triggered a reminder for me personally to ask that question. Thank you.
I, I presume that during the council liaison reports on my report, we can provide that update, but that, it's not germane to the purchase order discussion. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Sharon?
Christie Courley?
Hey, Christie?
Hello, thank you for taking my question. Just wondering when the next finance meeting will be. I think I can't, what was the date of the last one? And what, when will the next one be?
Do you want me to answer that, Mary Ann, as part of this item?
Yeah, I don't know when it is. Go ahead.
The, so we're preparing to have a finance meeting in early May. We we may have two in May, one related to the audit, yeah, which has just been transmitted back to us in draft form. But the auditor is not available to had, do the normal meeting due diligence until early May. And then there'd be a budget meeting. The finance committee typically meets three or four times a year. Last met late last year, we would have had a audit meeting earlier this year, but the audit wasn't complete by the auditor in time to do that. Thanks.
Sharon, are there any other questions?
No more questions.
Okay, coming back to the council, are there any comments or would someone like to make a motion?
I will move to approve.
Guys, do you approve the resolution?
Second.
All right, discussion. Sharon, roll call.
Councilmember Alves?
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke? Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin?
Hi. Item number 12, this is a report by the town manager about the COVID relief bill.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. Okay, this is an opportunity for the council to formally hear about the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We call it the COVID Relief Bill. There's no action on this item tonight. Potential expenditures or budgetary actions will be part, starting with the fiscal year 2122 budget. So tonight, want to give a summary of the beer, beer bill, the allotment of, for the town. Timeline of fund use, the relationship to town's future budgets, the talk a little bit about council guidance on the fund use and then comments or questions. So the bill was signed in 20, March 11, 2021. This is a quote from the bill itself. The total bill's quite a bit, almost $2 trillion and about 350 billion has been made available for municipalities. Well, a lot here, what is really important, and this is sort of a rephrasing of the same concept is, I'm sorry, is the first three bullet points and then use of funds. So primarily the funds are, are solely expected to be used as it relates to COVID impact. So loss revenue, any increased expenditures or economic harm. So it's a, it's actually a fairly broad definition in many ways. So part of the analysis that staff is undertaking now is looking at the impacts over the last year related to COVID. So there's loss revenue as it relates to the use of our facilities and loss revenues that relates to closure of the facility and not having planning and building services online. There's also expenditures that were made that were a little bit was covered under the CARES Act. We, we got about $58,000 from that initial expenditure, but there were many more actions that we took in order to prepare for COVID and its impacts that would be available for reimbursement under this bill. There's a couple of things that's worth noting here that we can't use the money on, can't use it for pensions. That makes a lot of sense. But we also can use it for nonprofit groups. We can also use it for businesses. So staff is preparing some potential recommendations as relates to continuing support businesses as they reopen and recover from the pandemic. This is our allotment, approximately $860,000. This is the smallest allotment in San Mateo County. The way that it'll work is we'll get two checks. One is expected by the end of the fiscal year for about half of the amount. The other one will come later. We are waiting for further guidance from the Treasury Department on its expenditure, but we have many resources that have been made available to us to understand how the monies can be spent, including the League of California Cities, California State Association of Counties. And I've been communicating with congressional offices, including Congressman Ashes Office to understand whether some of the things that could be considered would be reasonable expenditures. Right now, it says funds remain available through December 31, 2024. We don't know what that means. We don't know if that means you need to spend the money, you need to allocate the money, et cetera. And there will be, as you can imagine, extensive auditing of its use to prevent fraud or, or mishandling of those funds. So, uh, staffs recommendation at this point is that, you know, initial expenditures would be included in 2122, but there's no obligation to spend all the money as part of the budget next year. So I suspect we would come back and not recommend full expenditure. We also have to make sure that it is related back to the impact. So you know, there are scenarios that less than the $860,000 is, is ultimately allocated. So that's going to be coming soon. So it could be over be over multiple budget years or mid-year adjustments based on needs that we find in the community as the council and staff are having conversations. That concludes my comments. I don't know, Cara, if you had anything additionally you wanted to say, but we're happy to take questions uh, from public. Thank you.
Cara, do you have anything to add?
So, I, I'll just add that um, this obviously is a, um, in a state of flux in terms of um, the guidelines that are going to be enacted. The Department of Treasury is supposed to be um, enacting those, those guidelines. Um, there's um, a provision in the, in the bill that allows municipalities to use the funds for um, infrastructure projects, but those infrastructure projects are defined in the legislation to include water, sewer, and broadband. So cities have raised the question of, well, what about uh, stormwater or wastewater uh, projects? Is that included under the definition of a water infrastructure project? So that's just an example of the types of issues that um, are still um, evolving, and we hope to have some regulations from the, the Treasury Department um, in the next uh, probably sixty days.
And through the chair, it's fair to say that we're also receiving input from those who would like to see the funds distributed in particular ways. I think one way um, that we've heard from folks is Cal Water has customers in um, the Bear Gulch District in, in Portola Valley who have not been able to meet their uh, their, pay their water bills. So this, this could be a use of that, of those funds. I'm sure as we do some additional due diligence and speak to the business community, that there'll be specific ideas that come from there. Um, so a lot of potential options. Um, again, no, no immediate rush to spend the monies, um, but uh, staff will have some initial um, thoughts as it relates to the budget, um, and it can be developed over the coming years. Thank you.
Craig.
Um, you, you said that the first expenditures would be in our um, next year's budget. Um, does the money allow you to essentially reimburse yourself for expenditures that have already been made? So for the cost that we actually incurred over the last year and a half, can we transfer some of the money from these funds into our general fund and reimbursement of those? So not just, you know, budgeting future expenditures, but going back and looking through all the stuff we've spent in this last year and a half and seeing if any of that can be reimbursed.
Certainly looks like it. There are some cities that are going to be accepting money as revenue just straight up. Um, so we've heard that from a couple of our um, our colleagues in other cities. So, um, we are waiting to get some more guidance from the Treasury, and we hope that that comes out well before the budget gets developed because we don't want to do this incorrectly. So there's a little bit of um, um, educated guesswork on what this would look like. Um, from a budget standpoint, if we do do something that isn't quite what the Treasury Department's expecting, we can make those adjustments so that that won't be so much an issue, but um, I know of three cities that are simp- they, they're not ready to make expenditures, or they're just going to accept the, the, the funds as revenue.
Yeah, I think for larger cities that, that they probably have big enough expenses that they're, you know, it's, it's gonna be fine for us. It's gonna be challenging potentially to spend all this money in the, in approvable ways.
The other cities are simply not getting enough money to reimburse them for the impacts that they've had, whether it's transit, occupancy tax, sales tax hits. But we certainly had an impact in town. I forgot to mention the sales tax. There, there was a hit. Um, the, the, it won't total that amount, but there's other expenditures that you can do as it relates to things that have happened in the past, things you need to do in order to, to get up to speed that we think are appropriate at this point and have been initially vetted.
What about revenue lost, um, because we didn't have classes or rentals at Town Center, that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. That absolutely is included. And that, that's not a significant amount, um, uh, because we don't derive a lot of uh, income from those uses. Um, the uh, the, the income areas that, that looks to me like the major ones are planning a building when they were shut down. Um, although I need to do analysis to see if we saw, and then the uh, corresponding pickup in the same way after we opened up to make sure that the revenue is the right way. Um, and um, uh, sales tax. We did see a hit on sales tax.
Other questions? Okay, Sharon, are there questions from the public?
Yes, Christie Corley.
Christie?
Thank you. Um, I just had some, I, I've attended lots of committee meetings, and it seems like a lot of the committee uh, budgets have not been used in the last year as well. So I'm not sure where that would be additional money into uh, possible COVID relief as well, or um, I'm interested in a bathroom at Ford Field, a real one, instead of an outhouse. I think we, we should and could do that. I'm interested uh, in hand washing in a bathroom uh, at Ford Field and the soccer field due to COVID. I think we need to care about our families and um, being able to wash hands. And uh, but it's also for the hikers and the walkers and the bikers. And people that have disabilities that, that need to use the bathroom and not walk into Alpine. And I think on this side of Alpine, we need to provide that.
Okay, are there other questions? Sharon?
We have a caller, last four digits, seven, five, six, two.
Seven, five, six, two.
Was I done?
Were you? You paused.
Oh, I didn't know I paused. Sorry, where did I leave off? I thought I was talking.
Oh, you, oh, yeah, you must have cut out. You, you left off at hand washing and disability.
Oh, okay, so I was looking at um, infrastructure for traffic and roads and bike safety and pedestrian safety. Um, fire and police, Willow Brook and uh, Alpine, Wendy Hill, parking, if we could resolve some of those issues with the money. Um, those are just things that I thought of going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, seven, five, five, six, two, you're up.
I think you just muted yourself. You were off mute, and now I think you remuted yourself.
Yeah.
You're unmuted.
Sorry, I'm, I'm following the messages that I get on my phone. I, I'm, I apologize. My name is Caroline Burtongan. Thank you for taking my call. Um, I'm, I'm very interested in the finances of the town. I have uh, participated in many of the meetings. Um, I know how it works with small business. And I would appreciate um, just like other members have of, of the community have expressed, just for transparency, I was wondering if we can have like a session where uh, the last finance committee meeting or the finances were released to the public and then see how that rolls over to the new year and explain what the town is going to do with those um, revenues that they get from the federal government. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sharon, are there others?
There are no other hands raised.
All righty. Okay, then it comes back to us. Any parting comments? Because this is just an update, correct?
Right.
All right, well, then you all come back to us when you actually have some um, plans for how we might want to spend some of the money?
Yeah, we'll bring his, we'll bring some initial ideas as part of the budget. It's going to be iterative um, over time as we learn more. Um, so we thought it was premature to have a, a full-blown conversation um, tonight. I hope that's okay. Um, we thought we were going to learn a lot more in the, in the coming weeks and months, but because this information's been out there a little while, we just wanted to share it with the public and, and let people know that, you know, there's something happening.
Craig?
Yeah, one, one thing I would say about this um, th- this money, just sort of on a general philosophical basis, the purpose of it is really COVID relief. Um, and the impact of that is in the near term, much more than it is in the long term. So um, you know, yes, i- if there are potential infrastructure projects that we might be able to spend this money on, if we've got money left over, um, I, I could certainly understand the benefit of that, but you know, the, the faster we can get the most, as much of it as we can out the door and into the, into the economy and into the pockets of businesses in Portola Valley that have been suffering and reimbursing us for thinking we spent whatever else, that, that I, I think should sort of be the, the um, the primary goal. Um, and it's a, it's a lot of money, so being able to spend all of that quickly, I think is going to be hard. So we may need to look at some of these other projects as some of the commentators had suggested, but um, you, you know, the more we can as quickly as possible identify some really easy targets for getting the money out quickly, I think the better.
Thanks. All righty. Are we ready to move on? Item number thirteen is a recommendation by the mayor. The adoption of a resolution for amendment number five to the town manager employment agreement. Cara, are you going to take this one?
I am. Thank you. So this is an amendment to the town manager's employment agreement. The town council customarily conducts a performance review of the town manager once a year. And in connection with that review, the town council also evaluates the town manager's compensation. Last year, due to COVID, the town manager did not seek a compensation adjustment. Um, this year, the town council uh, conducted a performance evaluation and then appointed a subcommittee of Mayor Derwin and Vice Mayor Hughes to review the town manager's compensation. Uh, the current amendment that is before you reflects the subcommittee's recommendation to um, provide the town manager with a four-point-three-six percent raise. This uh, represents a two-year cost of living adjustment. Um, under the Brown Act, Act, the um, uh, council is required to uh, to uh, um, approve the contract in, at a public meeting. And the Brown Act also requires the amount of the salary increase to be put on the record. So that's why we're having um, a hearing on this particular matter where in the past, um, it typically appears on a consent item, but there has been a rather recent change in the law that requires um, this to, to be a separate um, agenda item. So the increase in the town manager salary uh, is nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars uh, per year. The new annual salary would be two hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And the effective date of the salary increase would be May first, twenty twenty-one. And that concludes my report.
Next, Cara, questions? Jeff?
Just, just to clarify, I believe the number is two twenty, two hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. So, so correct?
Seven hundred and thirteen, I think you got it wrong.
Seven hundred and thirteen, yeah, okay, sorry. I just, I heard, I heard that number was, was off, and I just was correcting it incorrectly. Two, two, four, seven, one, three, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Sharon, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
No hands raised.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council. Does anyone have any further comments or emotion? Jeff?
Um, you know, I said this to my colleagues in private, and I'll say it again publicly. I, last year, I, I can't count how many, I can't tell you how much time I spent on the phone with Jeremy um, as, as COVID took over and, and we were figuring out things left and right. So I just, you know, I've, I've thanked him before. I've thanked him many times. I'll thank him again tonight for the work he has done over all his time here, and that this is sort of, I, I think this is, is well-deserved and uh, uh, probably love to see something more in the future. Um, and with that, I will move to approve this amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Vera?
Okay. Um, discussion? Sharon, roll call.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernicke.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. I agree with Jeff, and I think I speak for all of us in extending our thanks to you for an extraordinarily difficult year, Jeremy. Um, and I think this evaluation process was probably our most comprehensive and rigorous to date. I wish to recognize Marcy Scott, our consultant. He was so helpful. And um, I hope you're happy.
I, I'm humbled. Um, you, you guys know me, it's hard for me to even, when I get embarrassed like this to even look, um, but thank you. Your, your support means the world to me. You've let me have my dream job for, for all this time, and I hope to continue with you as long as you'll let me. So thank you for recognizing the hard work this year.
And we also like that haircut.
Thank you.
And the haircut.
I'm not sad to see the funny tail go.
Yeah, I was sad, it was sad to see it go, but uh, all right, too.
Did you, did you keep it? Do you just have it like on the wall somewhere? Yeah.
No, no, I should have, like, I, I, I should have done that.
Right, yeah.
All right. Uh, council liaison and regional agency reports. Who would like to go first?
Um, I can go. I just had two. Uh, I had BKS meeting where there was a lot of discussion on Willow Brook. Um, the parking, Wendy Hill parking and so on. Um, that conversation is continuing. Staff is working with the committee and with the neighbors there on um, figuring out how to improve things. Um, usual smattering of items. Yes. Mission meeting. Um, there was a ground movement, potential upgrade, or it's done some trenching and drilling. Essentially, there's a fault that was on the map that looks like it's probably dead, and it's slightly to the left of where they thought it was. Um, and then the second item on the planning commission was uh, request for an exemption to the town's utility undergrounding for projects. So this was a project where um, the applicant had completed a remodel. Um, and then after the, immediately after the remodel, essentially, they're putting some solar panels up and installing an EV charger, and that's requiring a panel upgrade. Um, and so they were looking for an exemption to not have to underground from the street to their house because the panel upgrade would typically trigger that. Um, if they had done all of it as part of the remodel, that would also have triggered the undergrounding. Uh, and so the, the, the um, planning commission was weighing whether it made sense to sort of evaluate this solar and electrical car charger separately from the overall project. Because if you look at the cost of the undergrounding as part of just the solar panel and EV charger, it's, I forget what it was, a hundred and forty percent of the cost just to underground. Um, but if you look at it as kind of part of the overall major remodel project that they had just completed, it's a much smaller percentage. Um, so anyway, I, I think they, they, they weighed it the right way and, and um, they, they did end up granting the exemption. Um, part of it also, um, they got a, uh, they asked the fire marshal for the fire marshal's opinion on whether there was, you know, any safety issue from not undergrounding, and the advice from the fire department for this particular project was, was not. So um, I, I think they did a good job of kind of considering all the different elements of that, but it, it is something that um, you know, we want to keep an eye on probably townwide to make sure people aren't trying to take large jobs and split them into smaller jobs in order to skirt around some of these things. Um, so if it, if it keeps happening, we should um, probably take a look at it and make sure that people can't get away with that. Um, and uh, those were my two meanings.
Okay. Um, Jeff?
I, I had two as well. Um, Nature and Science uh, had a meeting to help sort of organize their first speaker, uh, speaker seminar. Uh, so last Thursday, Roger Romani gave his talk on black holes. I don't know how many of you were able to listen to it. I, I got to catch about half an hour before my other meeting I had to attend. Uh, it was fascinating. Um, I didn't understand most of it, but it was really interesting, and I, I saw at least fifty people on there. Um, so I think, you know, I think they, the, the Nature and Science Committee did a great job of getting this, this, this series started. And there's clearly a lot of interest out there for things like this, so I just, I'll say well done to them. Um, and I hope that those who were, uh, that those who were, were online enjoyed it. I know I did. Um, on Thursday was also my other meeting, which was a, a special meeting of the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, they had several things. Um, I guess the main things, they are still talking about, um, we sort of honed in on Town Center as a possible dog park site. We sort of honed in on town center as a possible dog park site. That little space between the tennis courts and Portola Road. There are several kind of, you know, things that need to be ironed out about that. Including the fact that sort of a temporary fence would cost almost as much to install as a permanent fence. For that and other reasons, the 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 actual pilot project might not come back for a few months. But they are still working on it and they're trying to sort of gauge interest. So it's 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 moving, it's going to move a little more slowly than maybe some of us had hoped. But we're hoping that we will have at least an attempt to a pilot pilot project there for for little dog area out there. The other event they talked about or well, two events are Zastatats and the town picnic, which usually happens in in September. And this, the discussion was to coordinate, possibly combine it with a a concert, which would not be the the PV Palooza that we were talking about last summer before COVID, but a concert. Basically, just a page, Paige Bishop was going to organize or John Badger and Paige Bishop were going to organize a concert, kind of just a just kind of a sort of a town concert. And I think the committee was leaning towards trying to do them the same day. So I was at the Tots and the picnic in the morning, early afternoon. Take a little break and then come back and do the concerts or early evening on a Saturday, but not unlike the town concert series. That was a preliminary. I think it's where we're leaning. It seemed like it was probably a little easier than trying to block out two two different weekends and get all the permitting and things in place for two different events. So they are they're continuing to work on that, but that's it's a little exciting. I'm, you know, I'm hoping that things continue to go so that that can you to work so that we could do something like that and hoping they can keep working on that going forward, but there'll be more to come on that. Those are the two big things they talked about, I'd say. Those were my two meetings. Thanks.
Sarah?
I didn't actually have any meetings, so I don't have a lot to report. I have my cultural arts tomorrow. And I just wanted to mention, given your comments, Jeff, that that exactly is on their agenda for tomorrow to talk about that and how to combine efforts to do all in one day. So I know they're they're already in touch and and planning in that.
Yep.
Direction. Otherwise, I don't have any updates.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I just had one and preparedness meeting on the first. That's one that Jeremy attended. In order to describe the virtual OEC software that we're talking about, and it was very well received by the committee, they they see some potential use for their own committee and it tends for some other groups in in town. But the one one thing that was kind of cool about the meeting was one of the the committee, the radio guys in the committee have been been working on making sure that our AM radio has been functioning properly. And so they went to to the FCC to get a in a better license with more for authorizing more higher power. And it just sort of fell into the black hole of federal government at the end of the last term and fortunately, our Anna Schu came to our rescue and she put a little pressure on somebody and while we were in the meeting, as we were sitting there, suddenly Ray written the the radio boy, Ray, he stood up and said, my God, it just came through, just as we were sitting and speaking, we've got our new radio permit for higher power. So once that gets moved up into the Kell Water Site, we should be in good shape, be able to cover the entire town and even some areas outside of town with our radio message. Other than that, it was a pretty standard meeting. Discussing an ongoing question about how to present committees, subcommittee reports to the to the overall committee and to the public who wants to attend without having to make the meetings longer and longer and longer as they seem to be getting stretched out in in some of many of our committees. So that's an ongoing challenge and any and I think anybody who has ideas on that and that score would be be really appreciated if they come forward. So we've been thinking about it and talking to our current chairperson. They'll file to try to try to speed things up and make sure that everyone gets is happy about the coverage of their reports and that it's we still meet all the transparency requirements. That was about it.
Okay, I have a few. On Saturday, March twenty-seven, Jeff and I both found ourselves on a virtual Zoom that was sponsored by the San Mateo County AAPI Caucus, that's Asian Pacific Islanders. And also on that was about the recent spate of anti-Asian violence, not just nationally, but also locally. And there was a panel with Sheriff Blanos, DA Steve Wagstaff, Dr. Russell Young, who launched Stop Asian Hate last year. And it was moderated by Jesslyn Manolo, the mayor of Daly City. And there was a lot of data and stories and questions and ideas. And one thing that they said, it was, you know, can you please support our caucus, which I did by joining, but Jeff and I also thought one way to support them was to create a resolution, which was in our packet tonight, and thank you for approving it. We had yet another CCG search committee meeting. I have never been on such a tedious, drawn-out search committee for a new ED as this one. And I still, there's still another meeting next week and then an entire day on April thirty, and I'm sure there's something after that. Anyway, on April second, we met to go over the questions. I think we had, I forget how many there were. There were a lot of questions. And we worked on them and got them back down to twenty. These are the questions that two panels will ask the finalists. There will be one panel, which the search committee is composed of, and then there will be another professional panel with people like Jim Porter from Public Works and I think Larry Patterson, who's a retired manager, transportation guy, John Ford from commute.org, those kind of people. And on April day was it? April seventh, I had my second mayor coffee at eight thirty. It was a very small group. Very nice. They asked about fire fuel reduction, evacuation. They asked about undergrounding the wires on the evacuation routes. We updated them with what's going on. And that was that was really easy. Had a CCG little meeting and forum on the eighth. In the little meeting, we just voted to support a couple bills. One is AB one seventeen, which is an electric bike incentive program, and another is a bill by Ting, AB twelve something, which has to do with toxic hazardous food packaging prohibiting such by twenty twenty-three. Then we reconvened for the annual forum, used to be called the retreat. Now it's the forum. And this year they took a new approach and they broke us into breakout sessions. There were three different sessions. And we would automatically be transported to them. That was actually the most exciting part. And the first breakout session was about greenhouse gas reduction initiatives, including electrification, things like that. The second was about stormwater funding shortfall solutions. And the third was about micro mobility, which would be like bike and scooter shares. And each forum was moderated by staff members. It was actually really pretty good. And in the smaller groups, we were able to generate some interesting ideas. Then there was an express lanes meeting on the ninth. That one was a little painful. Think of what that controversial item was. Was Jim Hartnett's last meeting, by the way, he's now retired from the district. Okay. Okay, so the the controversial one and the one that had the most lively discussion was a discussion about requesting that the San Mateo County Transportation Authority apply the express lanes project alone enhancement fee, which was something that they came up with, that the JPA pays the TA for their loan. It's a point four percent. So it generates about four, it costs us about four hundred thousand a year. So the suggestion was, how about if the TA takes that four hundred thousand and puts it into our equity program? Our equity program, which we still, it's still in the works. We still haven't approved it exactly, but there's a million that comes off the top from the express lanes project. And then I think it's six hundred thousand a year. Can't do that much with that much money in a county such as San Mateo County. So Diane Pappan from CCG came up with this. And I was a very enthusiastic supporter and wow, was there some pushback. I have never seen Emily Beach almost lose it. So I don't, in the end, we did get enough votes to have it referred to the TA and all we were asking is, can you please ask the TA to consider this? So we'll see. Other than that, the other stuff was pretty pro forma. Oh, we did talk about, we had a presentation on the clean air vehicle toll discount. A lot of us would like to see that going away for the clean air vehicles because they're no longer, they tend to be owned by affluent people, as Jeff knows. But in order to be consistent with the other the corridor, because we've got to be consistent with VTA, right? Otherwise, it's kind of weird if they're driving along at fifty percent and then they don't get a discount. So we will be consistent with them for now. And then in the future, we'd all like to try to reduce it to either twenty-five percent discount and then that's our direction. I think that was it. Yes, that was it. Jeremy, are you ready for your report?
Thank you. Um, so first I want to thank the Sequoia's leadership for putting out a the statement on the work that they recently did on their property at the Sequoia Trail. Like, I think that that was appreciated by those residents who saw this is in relation to a wildfire vegetation management program that that wasn't permitted. We're going to be working very, very closely with them to first ensure that the materials are removed from the property and then work with them on a mitigation plan through our committees. Thank you to Howard Young on staff and Judy Murphy from Conservation Committee for participating in those conversations. Library is going to be reopening next week. I don't have a firm date, but the week of April nineteenth, so that is incredibly exciting. Give an update on the couple of events that I virtually attended. One was the Bill Lane, the Center of the American West had a wildfire seminar that was fascinating. It actually included the governor of Colorado, the natural resources director for the state of California. Everybody's dealing with the same set of issues that that we are. I am buoyed by the fact that this council continues to be in front of the issue and in many important ways. But based on the conversations that I had with folks there, one of the panelists was a member of Headwaters, which is the organization that does all the work for the community partners for wildfire preparedness, the CPAC grant. That looks like we're going to be getting, which is great. Last night was the county's housing element meeting. We were there with four other cities and we went into a breakout session that had about twenty folks. Some names I recognize, some names I didn't recognize. It's a good discussion. It was a high level discussion about what the housing element is, a little bit about Rena and what the basic process is going to be for housing element update. As this council knows, we'll be having that discussion on April twenty-eighth, so that'll be a very substantial conversation then. The only other thing that I wanted to share was so it's the first I've gotten in five years with the town. A teacher with a quarter meter school, her name is Bridget Horgan, reached out on an art project and wants to have it temporarily displayed for installation on town property. So there is a a process that the town has in place to review art that is donated. That I put together a little team of people to take a look, but I have to tell you from what I've seen so far. I think it's wonderful. If I can, I'll just share a quick preview. It's a series of hearts that they want to put up different places in town. Here's an example of one that they put up for us so they can see it. So this this is a familiar corner, I think, for people. So I suspect they'll have no problem getting this approved, but got to take them through the process because that's important. So I was delighted to hear from Bridget and I hope she's I feel like a little little too much process that I put her through on this one, but she's been really great working with, so I really thank her. So I'll get I'll be getting on that. That'll be working with the cultural arts committee shortly on this. So I think it'll be fun. Here's here's actually a picture of what they'd like to see at town center. That this is quite cool. I know that really quite nice. Oh, it's a number of students at that quarter meter, it's great art students. So we'll be working on that. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. That would be fun for the dogs to go through the hearts like an obstacle course. Okay, Town Council Weekly Digest, Thursday, March twenty-five. Anything you're interested in? I hope you enjoyed number three. I insisted that it go in there. All right, let's go to Town Council Weekly Digest, Thursday, April first.
Sorry, to see Lori go. Understand, but she's been a very valuable member in both murders of preparedness, ad hoc wildfire and all the other stuff she's done with helping set up neighborhood watch and neighborhood watches and all that kind of stuff. So sad to see she'll be spending less time with the town for a while.
Yeah, no, I would thank Lori and hope that we will see her back again soon.
Promise to come back, so we'll hope to do it.
Just in case anybody wants to serve on the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, there are three open slots for elected and was on that committee.
Okay.
Right, anything else? Okay, let's go to Thursday, April eighth.
I I forgot to mention the Historic Resources Committee was supposed to happen this afternoon and didn't presumably because the Comcast outage basically interfered with our ability to have a group together. So hopefully we'll, I guess we'll be rescheduling that in the not too distant future.
I taught it to Nancy tonight through the chair. I think they want to do it same time next Wednesday, so.
Sounds good.
Sure.
Okay, number four, I signed up for it. I think our Congresswoman is going to be the featured speaker.
Yes, she is.
It's really not hard to do, guys. It's a Zoom. If anybody wants to join me and you can even have a glass of wine in your own house while you're at the meeting. Okay, with that, I just want to
Mary Ann, I'm sorry to interrupt. I I I forgot to mention something very important. The the town staff wants to welcome a new member of our team, Nicole Tendori. She is a new finance analyst working with Cindy Rhodes, the finance director. She's been with us for eight days. And I had the pleasure of seeing her briefly, actually last week when I was in town center, physically distanced and the like. And multiple reports from Cindy is that she's a great fit for the town, is already adding value, coming up with ideas on how to improve our systems and just doing a great job. So I, as you know, this is a long time coming. So we are really delighted to have her and freeing up Cindy to do the things that she is responsible for. So welcome, Nicole.
Great, thanks. And our next meeting on April twenty-eighth will be packed. So you might want to settle in. It's going to be a very long meeting.
Mayor Derwin, we have one hand raised in the public?
Sure.
Okay, Rita Holmes, Rita Combs?
Rita? Hi, I I'm sorry, but I was waiting for the update on the the finance software. And that was supposed to happen at, you know, during the report. So I'll wait for my answer. Thank you.
Yep, sorry. Invertly forgot that. So the this the update is going very well. this, the update is going very well. We're actually ahead in aspects of it. The staff has been able to focus on some of the additional elements related to bank reconciliation module and others in the last couple of weeks. Validation is underway. It looks good. We still are doing some training as it relates to what is a next generation reporting mechanism in the budgeting tool. We're more familiar with the classic model and producing reports. So we've had one round of that. I've asked for another round of that. So I can get up to speed on it. The system is currently open for our team to start putting in this manager's putting in their numbers for the budget process. So that's underway right now. So feel very good about where we're at.
Alrighty, and with that, we are adjourned.
Sorry, just a clarification. So would the software be able to produce a budget compared to the last meeting? I mean, for that June meeting, is it going to have a budget that we can see a transparent budget that we can actually reconcile and see?
Through the chair, we've had a budget that has been transparent and available for a number of years using this tool. I hope you're familiar with it. So I I think you may be conflating some issues related to what the council's been talking about earlier, but the budget preparedness tool has had no issues and has been in use for, this will be the third consecutive year.
I'm sorry, perhaps it wasn't the budget preparedness tool. It was some financial software that was being integrated. And there was just some questions in some in the past meetings, talking about using that software and people getting up up to date on that software.
That was the update I just provided.
Thank you.
Okay. Is it all settled now? All right.
Have a good night.
We're adjourned.